Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council meeting for Monday, January the 13th. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Valerie DiPaolo.
Here.
William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Morelli.
Here.
Christopher Palmieri.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky.
Here.
Michael Del Santo.
Present.
Victoria Triano.
Here. I believe Val DiPaolo has the prayer for tonight.
Heavenly Father, give us grace tonight to understand that the impact we make upon this community is not just for today, but for the generations who will follow us. Help us to do what is right, and if need be courageous. We commit ourselves, our decisions, and the town of Southington under your care. Amen.
Amen. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. May I have a motion on previous minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Right now, I would like to...
Oh, please manage.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. I'm sorry, I got excited here. Right now, I'd like to invite Kelly Morrissey, Dawn Micalley, and Mike Ricchio to the front, please. You know the way.
Speech ready? Your speech is ready?
Um, I gave a speech.
Let's go.
I've had the pleasure of working with all three of these individuals, and I first want to recognize Kelly Morrissey, who served our last Town Council from 2017 to 2019. Very bright, very articulate, a person who fights for what she knows is right, and added so much to this community. And so, Kelly, on behalf of the entire town, we want you to have this picture. Thank you so much for your service. And now, for Dawn Micalley. Oh, my goodness, Dawn has done so much in this town over the years. She's been on the Town Council from 2009 to 2019, and has provided much vision and energy to the council. She has served on the open space, as Chair of the Open Space, and last term, Vice Chair of this Town Council. And so, I mean, I could go on and on about all the things that Dawn has seen and done in this community, from White Christmas in the community, to the, to SOCA, our Arts Council... Arts Council. Arts Center. Cultural Arts Center. There it is. And so, it's a great pleasure to present this with a great thank you. When Dawn decided not to run for council this past term, I was a little concerned because I thought there was a voice going to be missing in the council. But she hasn't slowed down. She's just as busy as ever. Dawn, congratulations.
It is quieter, though.
The next person is Mike Ricchio, and there's no dates here. Oh, this is...
This is his last particular.
Like I was never here.
Mike was on the council before, and when he decided to come back, he called me and said, "Come on, let's go." And so, Mike has been serving this time around since 2013 to 2019. He is someone who has great leadership and great vision also. And Mike has brought all of his talents right here to Southington, and has really dedicated himself to this town, both on the dais, but also in the community itself. A great proponent for open space, a great proponent for utilizing the buildings and the resources that we have. He introduced waste to energy and so many things. Under his leadership, we declared that we wanted to be the greenest town in Connecticut, and we're very close to that, if not there. So, Mike Ricchio, it would be a great honor that I give that to you. Listen, the floor is yours. Would you like to say anything? No? No? No?
Yeah, I do.
Please.
Never at a loss.
Well, I just wanted to say that I can see that Chris is taking my place. I love the tie.
Thank you.
And I see a lot of department heads out there, and, you know, coming up here and working with the public is often difficult because there's a lot of criticism, there's a lot of expectations. But we've always had an amazing staff to back us up for all that we've done, and I, you know, that goes to the leadership of Mark, Gary, John Weigsel, you know, the three leaders that I had the pleasure to work with. So, I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff members, those that are here, those that aren't. Thank you to all of you guys who continue to kind of push forward and deal with all the mudslinging that you get, whether it's good or bad.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Berry couldn't be here tonight, but I had the pleasure of giving Mr. Berry his on Friday in my office, and he was very grateful to the town and the council.
Well, we want to thank Mr. Berry, too, for his many years of service, and I'm glad that he was able to receive his award. That was wonderful. Thank you, everyone. All right, our next item on our agenda has to do with awards and folks that are giving their all to this community as well. Michelle, could you come forward, please? Michelle Passamino, our Director of Human Resources.
Good evening. Thank you. For those who aren't aware, we've been doing, we've had this Exceeding Expectations, and it's our opportunity to openly acknowledge, recognize, and express appreciation for an employee's contribution to the town of Southington. So, it's designed to allow colleagues to nominate one of their peers as someone who has gone above and beyond the normal expectations within their position and is a positive influence on others. The benefits of employee recognition through programs like this and others is they've proven to include greater employee satisfaction, improve morale, loyalty to the organization, enhance teamwork amongst each other, and lower absenteeism. Tonight, we're honoring two of our employees, and because of a conflict in December, we were not able to recognize one of our employees from the Fire Department. Therefore, we'll be recognizing that individual along with our recipient for this month. In January, we saw nominations for employees who work at Town Hall, Water Pollution Control, Calendar House, and Community Services. When the nominations are submitted, the Exceeding Expectations Committee reviews and selects one person to receive, to be, as the recipient. Then comes the element of surprise. This is when we work with the department leader to bring the recipient to the Town Manager's Office for something he needs to discuss, which is never really very nice, I don't think, but I might have to work on that, because they never really are sure what they're going into, into Mark's office. So, upon arrival, though, we always have a representative, representatives from Town Council, Mark and myself, and we greet the recipient with a balloon, a gift certificate, and we congratulate them and give them a letter that basically outlines why they're, you know, what they were nominated for, who nominated them, and it really is a great honor for those recipients. So, tonight, both recipients will receive a framed certificate of appreciation, and it's signed by, signed by our Town Council Chair, as well as Mr. Shoda. So, let's start with the recipient from the Fire Department. Before turning this over to Assistant Chief Jimmy Paul, I would like to share with you one of the many reasons that he nominated this person. He stated, "I have served with or next to him during major emergencies throughout the town, that because of his actions and those that serve with him, there was a positive impact. He's educated himself to be an extremely, to an extremely high level." To properly introduce the recipient, I turn the mic over to Assistant Chief Jimmy Paul.
Hello, everyone. I just want to take a couple more minutes just to talk to, really about my good friend, Tom. Sorry, I have a cold. Is, last week, he just celebrated his 29th year of service to the town of Southington with the Fire Department. He was hired in January 7th, 1991, and there are so many things to say about him. He's served on just about every committee, every aspect in the Fire Department, and just a true leader. And I'm proud to say that numerous incidents, whether they're house fires, or complicated motor vehicle accidents, or other emergencies, I got to actually serve next to him, and I knew I was going to come home. I knew everything was going to be all right because he's that type of a person. So, it's my honor to award Battalion Chief Thomas Donnelly the Exceeding Expectations Award.
Don't go too far, Tom. We want to get a picture.
Man of many words. So, the next recipient is from the Water Pollution Control Department. And before turning the mic over to Assistant Superintendent Kari Williams, I'd like to share with you one of the many reasons that he nominated this person for, as the recipient. His moral compass, hard-working nature, and discipline made him stand out compared to the rest. He provides valuable ideas during emergencies and helps keep staff organized. So, to properly introduce this recipient, I turn the mic over to Kari Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kari Williams, and I'm the Assistant Plant Superintendent for the Water Pollution Control Facility. I also nominated Keith Langston for the Exceeding Expectations Award. A little bit about Keith. Keith has been with the Water Pollution Control for the last 26 years. When I see Keith, I honestly look at him as a walking encyclopedia when it comes to the treatment plant. He knows pretty much anything and everything about the plant, the process, equipment, collection system, remote locations out and throughout town. He's done a lot for me at the treatment plant. When I first got there, Keith pretty much gave me authority, the entire plant, showed me the entire process of where the flow goes throughout the plant. There's been times that we've been out, headed to a remote location throughout town, and he'll just pull over at random areas and say, "Hop on, I want to show you something." And I'll get out and I'll follow him, and we'll start walking through the woods, and I'm looking around like, "Where's he bringing me?" And all of a sudden, out of nowhere, you'll see this giant 36-inch line just in the middle of the woods. You know, me, myself, and the average person probably has no idea that that line is in there, but Keith, through experience, knows a lot. I mean, I could sit up here for hours, I guess, and explain everything that, or sit up here for hours and talk about Keith and all that he knows, but try to keep it short. So, I just want to say, thanks, Keith. Thanks for all that you've done. Thanks for all that you will do in the future, and every day that you give me a hand at the treatment plant, and I just want to say I appreciate everything that you do, and here's the 26 more years.
The walk in the woods, don't get any ideas about that. All right. I just want to say, all I've done is get up in the morning, go to work, and do the job as best as I can, and make sure everybody goes home safe at the end of the day, and it's that simple. Thank you. Thanks, Keith.
Can we do that, Mark?
Absolutely.
So...
Would you gentlemen want to come up and, you want to do it in the well or back here?
Yeah, first, let's do Tom first. Come on up, Tom. Come on.
Where do you want to go?
Let's go, let's go right, right up here, Mark?
Yes, easier up here.
Okay, then come on up, Tom.
These chairs back a little. Under the chairs. You need to get one person up here, then all of you down.
Yes, that's so true.
I want to get my left side.
Come on in, everybody.
Squeeze it in.
We're, we're...
Show it to you.
No, no, no. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Move down, move down. Back in the center. Come on, very good. Right at this, that's great. I don't understand the pronunciation. Very good. Oh. Great. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. It's all right. I'm so happy for you. Thank you so much. Well deserved. Now, nobody move. Here comes Keith. Come on, Keith.
Congratulations. You too. Thank you. All right, mate? Hey. Congratulations.
I didn't want to see you at the golf course.
No kidding. I'd rather be at the golf course. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. No, no, no. Don't be stressed. Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Congratulations. Very good. Thank you so much, Paul.
See you on the links. Okay. Without a doubt.
Excellent. I just want to, once again, say congratulations to both Keith and Tom. Life well served. Let me just say that. Thank you so much on behalf of the entire community. Very good.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I just...
Oh, of course.
Just to pick up on the comments that Mike said before, we really have a phenomenal staff in town, and I'm so thankful, Michelle. We started this about a year and a half ago, and so grateful that we're continuing this. So, thank you for doing that as well. It's a small way to recognize and let you know how much we appreciate all that you're doing in town. So, just want to thank you and for your efforts, and thank our town employees for all the work they do. We really appreciate you.
True. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you so much, everybody. Good words. Very good. So, now, we're on council matic communication, council person communication. Anybody want to share some things yet, Chris?
I just have one. I had the pleasure of attending the Board of Ed meeting last Thursday, along with Val, Mike, and Jim. What I want to note about this is it was the first time it's been done this way in that the Board of Education unveiled their budget, but they did it at a regularly scheduled meeting so that it is televised, so that our residents can hear exactly what's put before them, and ultimately, you know, us when it come, and the Board of Finance. So, I want to thank Chair Carmody for that change, and I really think that's an efficient way to communicate the information out to the public. And again, that meeting is televised as well. And remind everyone that there are two budget workshops this coming Tuesday and Thursday. Tuesday is at Hatton at 7:00 PM, and Thursday is back here at 7:00 PM, just to unveil the Board of Education budget.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much, Chris. Who's got some? Val?
Thank you. So, just a couple of special events that are coming up that I just wanted to highlight. Saturday night is, the Southington Elks are having their annual Military Appreciation Dinner. I believe there's a couple, a few council members that are attending.
Yes, there are.
So, that's Saturday night at 4:00. And on Sunday is the Martin Luther King Celebration.
Just going to mention, that's good.
At 10:00 AM, over at First Baptist Church.
On Main Street.
On Main Street.
On Meriden Avenue. Meriden Avenue.
Sunday?
Yeah.
Sunday at 10:00 AM.
Yep.
So, just a couple really special events.
Excellent. Chris?
Just, if, I forgot to say that. I want to thank the church because they recognize annually two middle school students.
Yes, we do.
So, it's a special award for a student from Kennedy and DiPaolo. And recent change, they actually come for the past couple of years, and they present the student in front of their peers at the school prior to the event. So, they're coming this week to both Kennedy and DiPaolo, and again, just want to thank the church.
Yeah.
It's such important work, and want to thank them for recognizing the students.
And for all the years that they've been doing this, too.
Right.
They've been doing this for quite a number of years. So, it's changed a little bit. It happened in the church hall originally, then it went to the aqua turf. It's back at the church, and we just thank them very much from the town because it's good to, good to have them continue. Chris Pulis, you had a...
Yeah, I have two quick items. On December 14th, I'm very proud to say that the Town Council was out in full force at Stop &amp; Shop at the Annual Salvation Army Bell Ringing Day. And I'll tell you, we worked as a team, and we were, raised over $1,500 for Southington Community Services. It's such a, the town is so generous, and, you know, I bring my kids, and used to have one door with my kids, and every year, we tried to beat our goal. And this year, I said to my wife, "We got to divide and conquer." But people came by, no joke, $100 bill right in that pot, and some people would come and give their change. It didn't matter. But everybody was very thoughtful and caring for people in need, and...
And collectively, collectively doing something for our most needy. Every dollar that was put into that bucket stays right here in Southington, and that's an amazing thing. So, on behalf even of all of you that were able to go, I know Chris had gone a different day, but every one of us participated in that, and I just couldn't be prouder of the council getting out there and ringing that bell, and we raised a lot of money.
I challenged the council next year to hit 2,000.
There we go.
We hit 1,500, and I think we can do it. We might have to extend our times there. Next item I wanted to share was the Fire Recruitment and Retention Committee met on January 8th, and I'll share, I'm not going to list every single thing, but there are many, many recruitment efforts underway that include monthly community events at which firefighters and equipment are hopefully going to be present. Interest cards and posters will be distributed. Upcoming, we have the Polar Plunge, and there'll be a presence there. Along with that, there's an outreach effort to local businesses to make them aware of our recruitment efforts for volunteers. I'm hoping to reach out to the Southington Chamber of Commerce, asking for support and community partners. And lastly, the Department Commissioner Moyes and Battalion Chief Heath reported that they're exploring a shift to some online training when possible to make the time commitment for volunteers a little bit more flexible. I do have our most recent recruitment numbers since this committee was underway. Thirteen new fall recruitment recruits, nine in Company One, two in Company Two, two in Company Three. They're in classroom training right now. It's the highest number, people were saying, anecdotally, the highest number in recent years. Other classes had maybe four people or one person. There's this concept in Company One of assigning mentors to some of these recruits, so if, you know, at any point in time, they need more guidance, we want to keep, retain them in that recruitment, in the training program. And there's actually, in Company Three, a long-term plan is in the works to transition one of the fire police officers to firefighter, which I think is, is just a great move forward with the fire police, to think of a way to repurpose those volunteers.
Absolutely.
And so, it was reassuring to hear those numbers.
Congratulations, firefighters.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Yes, Paul?
Madam Chair, thanks. I think the first thing, maybe to Councilman Del Santo, I think Councilman Pulis owes us for the fundraising, doesn't he? We beat him in the fundraising.
I don't know.
Actually, I got the numbers here.
Oh, forget it. Oh, that's another guy.
I didn't want to bring it up.
Nice job.
704 for two hours of Pulis's.
It keeps going up every time you do it.
Versus 844 for the rest of the council.
Fair enough. We owe you a beer.
This video, this video footage of him stuffing those canisters.
I didn't want to bring it up.
That's okay.
Fair enough. I owe you a beer.
We owe cocktails, I think, to Mr. Pulis.
Paul?
Yes. So, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say again to the, to the, to the three leaders who were on the council and did serve time, you know, Kelly, for her leadership.
Serve time.
Well, I didn't mean serve time. I guess for some of you...
They got out for good behavior.
For me, I wanted to say thank you personally, you know, for your leadership and service, Kelly, and some of the discussions that we had kind of leading up to, you know, the last November, so thank you. And Dawn's not here. I had hoped she would stay, but it looks like she stepped out for her leadership, and we didn't mention planning and zoning. She had a previous tenure there, so great work there, and leaving open space in good hands, so thanks for her continued dedication. And last but not least, he's still in the back room, Mike Ricchio. Leadership, your guidance, and most importantly, for your friendship, so thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I wanted to thank a couple other folks. First of all, you know, we've, we've started the work on the Curtis site, and I wanted to say thanks to the Town Manager and the town staff, Keith and Dave LaValle, Attorney Paul Bedard, who took some time, and others who came out and walked the property. I thought it was, it was a nice compromise to go out there and identify and really work towards, you know, saving additional trees out there and trying to minimize the impact of the footprint of the work that we're doing out there to ensure that we're bringing, in a cost-effective way, the new sewer line out there, the gravity feed there. So, thanks to everybody who worked on that, and especially town staff who were able to make some changes there. In the last month, I've also had the opportunity to meet a few of the folks who are doing the day-to-day operations within the town, as I learn a little bit more about some of these day-to-day operations. And I wanted to thank Jimmy Paul and the Fire Department for taking a few hours and meeting with me and, you know, giving me at least a cursory overview. I'm not an expert, but I know a lot more now than I did going into it, and I appreciate you spending the time to show me the ins and the outs, the equipment, each of the firehouses, and I really appreciate that, so thank you. Annette Turnquist and Gabe Calandra, you know, they spent another couple hours with me talking about Public Works and Highway, and again, a very valuable experience, spending some time, learning the ins and the outs, learning about the LEAF program, learning about snow, how the operations in the town, how they care for sidewalks and roads and LEAFs and all that. And I think that that was eye-opening for me to see the rigor that they put into their day-to-day operations. So, thank you to Annette and Gabe, and the entire staff in the Public Works and Highway, and the Parks Department. And then lastly, this weekend, I had an opportunity to spend a few hours with Mark Ramsey, going through our LEAF program. And again, I encourage everybody who hasn't had the opportunity to go out there and spend time to, to take some time and learn about the LEAF program, and how agriculture and farming and education, tying that into our educational program is so valuable in town. And as Farm Heritage and Open Space are working more collaboratively, I think, you know, it's really important that we all have a good understanding of what's going on with that program. So, thanks to Mark and the folks who are involved in the LEAF program. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Paul. Very much. Anybody else? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a friendly reminder that this Saturday, January 18th, at 1:00 PM at Camp Sloper, is the annual Polar Plunge, and I just would like to thank all the people who have donated time and are participating, especially on the council. I think this is the most participation that we've had in many years, so I look forward to a great day on Saturday.
And I'm so happy our Fire Department is going to be there when these guys jump in the water. That's all I'm saying. I feel a lot better knowing you guys are there.
Bring a defibrillator.
Keep an eye on this guy, please.
Anybody else? Mike?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things. I need to piggyback on a couple of things. Chris, I can't agree with you more. Not only at Stop &amp; Shop ringing the bell, and thank everyone for going, and the public, Southington is just incredible. You know, I think every single person that walked out the door, if it was a penny or a dollar, or $10, they threw in that bucket. It was nice to connect with some people that you don't see all the time. It just was wonderful, and I enjoyed it all the time there. And at Community Services, I made a few stops there around the holidays, and the best part about it, the line donating was longer than the line leaving, and that's the big thing. That's, that's something that Southington is just, just wonderful for. And then to piggyback on what Paul was saying, for Kelly and Dawn and for Mike, thank you very much for your service. I know how tough it is to give so much of your life to the town. We all do it. We all sacrifice to be up here. I met with Mike Ricchio back in 1998, stopped and had a beer with him, and he got me into politics back in 1988. So, I, yeah, so you're, you know, my wife wants you. No wonder why I'm doing it. But, you know, I thank you all for your service, and it's just great, and I wish you the best of luck in any future endeavors. Transfer station passes are available. I've got my Public Works hat on, you could stop down to the clerk's office and get your new transfer stations for, take passes for 2020. I want to congratulate Mr. Chris Norfield, who was selected as the manager of the Hartford Yard Goats, a little Southington pride there, he's going to be the manager of the Yard Goats. He, Chris Norfield, if you don't know, is a Southington born and bred resident and he played 10 years in Major League Baseball. So it's a great honor for him to, to get that job and so we should all go and support him and go up to Hartford and see a few games. We have our first Economic Strike Committee meeting this Thursday at 4:00 PM. It's at the Town Hall this time because the Board of Ed is doing a budget meeting or they have a caucus or something here at the time here. So for this meeting, it's going to be at the Town Hall. Future meetings, I imagine, would be in this side room, but more to follow as other meetings come on. And then one last thing, I did get a phone call from a constituent about the traffic light outside of CVS, in front of CVS on Route 10 where Old Turnpike Road and Route 10 goes around. And I use this a lot because I live in that area and she had told me that the green light to go straight down Old Turnpike Road is only about 10 seconds long. And it's not even enough for two cars and I went and I tested it and she's wrong, it's six seconds long. So it's, it's literally two cars and if you're backed up, if it's, you know, after school and you're backed up to like Darren House or the library, you can sit at that light three times. So I'm not sure if maybe Public Works...
Actually, it's Police Department would have to contact the state, that's a state jurisdiction light.
Yeah, it's, it's quick, two cars and that's it.
I'll check with the chief.
I appreciate that. And that was it, that's all I have.
Anybody else last stop?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I, last month I reported that I was involved in a medal ceremony for Mr. Anthony Rosenthal and he did pass away the day after Christmas. His family reached out to me and they were very, very appreciative and again, I just wanted to tell you that John DeMello at the Veterans Department did a lot of work behind the scenes. The family was very, very happy with the outcome and they thanked me immensely. Also, I had the privilege to go to the library for a couple of hours to see the Southington ARC Rock All-Stars Christmas Concert. And there's a local musician named John Ingrazia, who's a professional musician, who travels the area and he donates time to teach people with disabilities instruments of music. And they're looking for instruments, so I did want to announce that if anybody has an instrument like a guitar, I think we have a lot of drums, but any kind of saxophone or trumpet or whatever, if you want to donate that, either get ahold of me or to stop at the Ark in Plantsville. It's a great program, the kids really get a lot out of it.
That's wonderful, yeah, very good. You know what, I think that's what we should do. Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies? So I think that's a great idea.
I made a mask.
Let's take about a five-minute break, everybody grab a cookie and a couple...
For the employee recognition.
Yeah, employee recognition.
For me.
Yeah, sure. Mike, just to... I know, get those cookies.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think that's what we should do. I, Mr. Lombardi just said, can we take a break for cookies?
Which is good news. We also got an update on the installation of the gravity sewer for the Blatchley pump station. And the anticipated start date is the week of January 13th, which is this week. And we also took action on a proposal for sewer equity application, which eventually will be coming to the council.
Mm-hmm.
Val, if you have anything else you want to add, sure?
No, I think that was it. The, um, I did happen to go up to Blatchley Street, though, to stay have started. It looks good.
They started.
For the gravity line, right?
Started last week.
Yeah.
Monday.
It looks good.
Good. Very good. Thank you. Um, any questions? Hearing none. Let's go to Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on January 8th, which was, um, a week later than our usual meeting because January 1st was supposed to be our meeting. So, uh, going forward, it'll be the first, um, first Wednesday of each month. But we did have a presentation from Mark Bobman, who is the Executive Director of the Bristol Resource Recovery Operating Committee, or as I like to call it, the B-R-R-O-C, uh, on the process of having a hazardous waste disposal day here in Southington. We participated in these in the past, and we did have a date in Southington. Uh, I think the last one was back in like 2014. So, um, he explained the process, and the committee felt it was absolutely necessary for Southington to be responsible and to dispose of this hazardous waste in a productive manner. So, um, I spoke with Mark, and Mark is, uh, consulting with the Health Department to have one of these dates sometime in the near future. So, we'll report back, uh, as to when that date was going to be.
To add to that, we're part of a region, so we have to fit into the regions. So, it may not be, you know, in the near future, maybe, because they usually schedule a year or so in advance.
Okay.
And that gives me the time to, uh, add a little extra money to the budget because obviously this is a little more costly.
Right. And that was the interesting thing is it's expensive, but it's, it's so important that we don't want folks dumping paint and oil in the sewers.
Right.
So, it's important to have them. Or it's sitting in people's basements, even the people that are responsible that have to sit around and wait for these events to happen. So, we thought it would, you know, be a good idea for Southington to be responsible and have one here in town for our residents. Um, we had a couple of speakers at our meeting, Rob Phillips from the Planning Department and Jeff Poehler, the Assistant Building Inspector. They gave a presentation on the, um, the arduous tasks of Freedom of Information requests that have been coming in. They've been coming in fast and furious, and some, some months, 20 or 30, other months up to 50. So, it's really bogging down the staff. So, a, uh, not necessarily a complaint, but a question came in as to how come it's taking so long for these requests to be fulfilled. So, they went over the process, and the commission felt it necessary to look into possibly digitizing these, uh, the Freedom of Information requests. And so, the, the, the permits that are online, uh, it's a paper trail at this point, so it's, they have to go in a couple of different places to find, uh, permits.
Yeah.
So, we thought it'd be a good idea to look into possibly digitizing the process. So, Rob Phillips is going to look into that and then get back to us on that as well.
Great.
Okay? So, there could be some benefit to that. We had a presentation, not a presentation, but we spoke about the transfer station. As I mentioned earlier, the new passes are available at the Town Clerk's Office. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, we're having a sign made. So, when things get busy at the transfer station, there are, um, and there's line, there's cars lined up down Ulter Pike Road, folks traveling south are not going to be able to turn left into the, uh, the transfer station. So, we're having a sign made.
That ties up so much traffic.
That's right. That's right. So, it'll be easier flow for traffic if we have the sign made, and when it gets busy, uh, town staff will go out and put the sign out there and, um, just to alleviate any confusion for folks that are trying to use the transfer station.
Great.
An update on the leaves. There was a second pass of Zone 1, and that was completed. Uh, and they're just, they were finishing up last week, some heavy area cleanups, and leaves, leaves are done for, uh, for the 2019 season, finally. Um, we had a, a question come through from a resident to Mr. Pulis, from Councilman Paul Pulis, when he was campaigning, actually. He had a question about sidewalks, and, um, the location was for Carter Lane, and, uh, she had requested, uh, just what, she wanted to know what the process was to get some sidewalks done. So, we spoke about that, and Keith Hayden is going to, and his staff is going to decide, uh, which side of the street on Carter Lane would be most appropriate for sidewalks. And the process is, once they determine that, they'll send letters out to the residents on that road. And, uh, there's a, there's a price that comes along with installing sidewalks, so all that is delineated in the letter. So, um, in the near future, they're going to send letters out to the, to those residents. And if all the residents on Carter Lane want sidewalks, then there's something that we can look into possibly installing them. Um, so, I don't know if Paul wanted to add anything about the sidewalk piece.
Sidewalk piece, I would just, I would just add, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair of the
I got you.
Public Works. Thanks. Uh, just that Councilman Pulis and I had agreed that we would also, as a follow-up, uh, have some discussions about any other high priority areas in town that we think could benefit from sidewalks, that possibly could come back to Public Works Committee and maybe, uh, this council for discussion
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in the future. So, you know, we'll be, we'll be looking at those in the weeks and months ahead.
Good. And then one last thing is, um, I had, uh, had a bright idea of possibly looking into bagging the leaves instead of vacuuming them up, and I had Keith look into some towns that do that. And, um, like the dummy that I am, I didn't realize that, that would take all new trucks and, um, different manpower to do it. So, there would be some cost savings, but, um, I asked him to actually look into a couple of more towns to try to look into. If there is an effective cost saving, if, if it turns out to be an effective cost-saving measure, then we could look into it. But at this point, the trucks that we have are vacuums, so we're kind of stuck with them at this point. Uh, but more to follow on that. If something comes in, if it's a, a magic bean that could, we could save a few bucks, then I'll report back out, but it doesn't look like it.
And we'll be sure to put your phone number
Yes, of course.
All up the public comments.
Right. Right. I'm sure filling those bags is easier than raking them to the street, but...
Oh, yeah.
Madam Chair, can I make one point of clarification?
Yeah, sure.
Um, just, just for those who are listening to the discussion on the hazardous waste, I think it's important for folks to realize that, um, the town manager mentioned that there, that there, we are in a, um, a regional group, a co-share, if you will, almost. Uh, and for those people who do have hazardous waste, if they have something now, uh, or in the near future, um, they don't have to wait for Southington to, to hold their event. Um, all of our co-share partners in the area who participate in the program with us will accept the hazardous waste. They can go down, uh, which department, the, the...
Actually, it's on, it's on our website.
It's on the website.
We just had one in November. We usually have a November and an April, and it's part of the 13 regions.
That's right.
And, uh, you go there, just show your driver's license, and Southington gets billed directly. You don't have, don't have to worry about that.
So, you can go to Bristol or a neighboring town.
We're billed by the, the car, not necessarily what you bring in. So, uh, we take care of that out of the, out of our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Paul. And that completes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Um, Apple Harvest Advisory Committee.
Dave's up.
Yeah, Dave's. I was going to introduce him.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Dave LaPrae, uh, Apple Harvest Festival Coordinator. Um, I'm going to go over the financials from last year's festival, but, uh, before I do that, I just quickly want to, um, talk about, um, last year's festival. It was a tremendous success. Uh, we had six fantastic days of weather. As we all know, um, weather can make or break the festival. So, um, good weather, crowds came out, we had, um, fantastic entertainment. Once again, we're able to do a National Act Band that brought in thousands. Uh, we had a great variety of vendors this year. We were totally packed, literally had no more room for any more tents, um, which is a good thing. Um, we had some people on hold that we were able to get in, but, um, all in all, just a fantastic festival. So, um, in your packet, I have a few, uh, forms there for you guys to review. Um, the first one shows the budget from last year. Um, in the end, we had a profit of $30,500. Um, just for the record, that will change just a tad for the simple reason of, um, the coordinator stipend. Um, there still is a couple of payments that got to come in that will deduct from there. That's about $769, as well as, um, some utilities that will come in from every source. So, saying that, we'll, we'll be looking at a $29,000 to $30,000 profit from last year.
Wonderful.
Which is fantastic. Um, the second page shows a four-year comparison, just so you guys can see that. And, um, lastly, on the last page, is the Apple Harvest, um, fund balance, which is a little over $114,000 at this time. So, the festival's in great shape. Um, the committee is, is formed again, and we're looking forward to 2020, and, uh, we're getting the ball rolling.
Excellent.
So, any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Go ahead, Chris.
Just a comment. Thank you so much for your work on the festival, uh, and everyone who was involved. I do want to, I think it would be remiss, um, to overlook Chair, uh, Councilman Palmieri's role and leadership in this past year's festival as chairman of that committee and sort of that.
Well, and also, also, uh, Tom Lombardi, they're co-chairing.
Yes. Thank you, Vicky. And, um, just to thank them, like, knowing the council duties and knowing the magnitude of that committee, um, we couldn't, um, you know, we're, we're indebted to you guys for your hard work. Thank you very much.
It's a, it's a total team effort. I mean, it's not a one-man show by any stretch, uh...
Absolutely.
We got the committee, we got volunteers, so it's a, it takes a, takes an army to lead it, so...
Whether you're there seven o'clock in the morning or seven o'clock at night, these guys are always there. Chris, Tom, Dave, you know.
Mr. Dos Santos is always next to the apple fritter booth.
Of course, or the sausage grinder tent, you s- you know it. I'm right there.
Thank you, Dave, very much.
You guys, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks, Dave.
Anyone else want to speak on it? Uh, Tom, did you have anything you wanted to mention, or...
No, I just echo, um, Dave's comments. Thank you to Chairman Palmieri on last year, and, uh, just to, to the council as a whole. Um, if you have any input, you know, we, we just met last week, um, and during the meeting, I think the major item that we discussed will be discussed in the town manager's report later on this evening. But, uh, you know, we're always looking for input and different ideas and things like that. And, and again, it's, it's all about the volunteers. I mean, we have so many people in this community that, that volunteer for the festival, and it really is an amazing thing to see everybody come out. So, thank you again to everyone that, that, uh, made the
Congratulations, Rachel.
... success.
Good. Okay. Um, the Plainville-Southington Regional Health District.
I'm Dr. Stephanie Uriello, uh, current chair of the, uh, Plainville-Southington Regional Health District, and happy to say that I was re-elected at our meeting last December. Um, at our meeting, uh, I, I would advise everybody to go to the Plainville-Southington Regional Health District website. It's pshd.org, because, um, the website is kept up-to-date with regards to, um, diseases that are going on around town, things are going around on our state, the prevalence of them in our community, and what can be done to assuage them so that we can prevent the disease. We had a discussion because in autumn, you know, uh, triple E was prevalent. We didn't have any cases in, um, Southington, but Middlefield did have one case. Um, we are holding flu clinics in each town that we represent, and the next clinic will be at the Calendar House here in Southington from 9:00 AM till 12:00 PM at, on the 15th of, um, of January. Um, also, our director who's here, Mr. Shane Lockwood, um, is past president of the Connecticut Association for the Directors of Health. He continues to meet with, um, Renee Coleman Mitchell, who is the new, newly appointed by Governor Lamont, Commissioner on Public Health, and he meets with her as, as part of those duties. But the big thing I have to report is that we, um, through, uh, uh, very good fiscal management, our budget committee is pretty astute in, uh, keeping costs down, we're actually, um, proud to say that we're going to save the town some money. Um, we decreased our per capita to each town by 10 cents. Um, I will give you a little bit of background. The per capita is the amount that we charge each town, um, for funding for the health district. Um, the health district was formed on July 1st, 2011, and it relies on funding from the three-member towns in the form of per capita, grant funds, and state funding, and fees from permits and licenses. We have never raised our fees since our inception on, uh, July 1st, 2011 for permits and licenses. The per capita has also, um, rate, ma- ma- been the same since 2011. And it's pretty remarkable when you consider that, considering that there are increased costs such as insurances, salaries, and overall business costs. On, a year ago, January 1st, 2019, Middlefield joined the health district. This was part of the previous commissioner, Raul Pino, um, his efforts to regionalize health districts to contain costs on a state level. And Renee Coleman Mitchell, the woman I just mentioned, who's the new DPH Commissioner, um, is going along with that. So, we had an increased revenue from Middlefield. We have, all the years that I've been on the, uh, health district, uh, board, we have financial, acute financial oversight. We voted to reduce the cost of the health district by lowering our per capita rate by 10 cents. So, it was $6.75 per person per town, and we're lowering it to $6.65. Southington is going to realize a savings of $4,500. Plainville will realize a savings of $1,700, and Middlefield $450. This is based on the number of population in each town. The state of Connecticut also contributes to our per capita funding. They're supposed to contribute $1.85. They have never funded it completely. So, I'd like to say that we've done a good job managing our finances for the health district in order to be able to afford this savings to the town. Yes, it's minimal, but it is a savings in these times of everything going up and increased taxes, et cetera, et cetera. So, for the people that are new to the town council, I would like to just give a brief, and I mean brief, background as to what the health district does. The health district, through its sanitarians, licenses over 50 food service establishments, 100 nail, hair and nail salons, and over 25 public pools, and also tattoo parlors. They're also responsible for inspecting daycares and responding to houses, housing and nuisance complaints. And this includes, uh, hoarding situations as well. They also test, inspect, and approve plans for septic systems. They respond to health emergencies, conduct flu clinics, and participate in many local committees on topics such as active lifestyles, the opioid crisis, emergency management, emergency medical services, and behavioral health. I'll give you some statistics for 2019. There were 775 inspections of food service establishments, and to piggyback on what Dave LaPrae says, they have to, the health department, uh, looks at each food vendor for Apple Harvest Festival, of which there were over 40 booths, and they do that every year. There were 350 inspections of the temporary food booths, 150 housing and nuisance complaints, 60 public pools, 115 nail and hair salons, seven flu clinics, and 11 daycare inspections. They're all licensed and primarily inspected by the state. The, the health district also performed over 50 soil tests for septic systems and inspected 121 systems once they were installed. The health district also approved 17 private wells, and this was all in 2019. So, I'm happy to report that we are saving the town a little bit of money, and I'll entertain any questions anybody has.
Anyone? I think we're set. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Our self-insurance, uh, report, please, from committee.
Sure. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the self-insurance committee met on December 16th. A few items to report. Um, at that time, uh, with the most up-to-date numbers, we won, were $134,000 over budget on claims. Um, our consultant reported that this is nothing to be concerned about based on trend, and that our numbers are virtually flat, and we're right on budget for fi- we were right on budget for five months into the annual cycle. Um, after our claims update, we, uh, had a discussion, and, um, the committee, uh, voted to budget $24,750,000 for fiscal year 2020, 2021, which is about $229,000, uh, $229,000, uh, lower than what Anthem had projected we should budget. Our rationale, um, for this reduction was based on, uh, two items. Um, for one, uh, we took a look at how we have done over the last five years with self-insurance, and we typically end, end up about a half million dollars under budget. That's the average for the last five years. So, um, what that means is, um, we have $500,000 left over. Uh, because we have a healthy fund balance, and that's not arbitrary either, we have a policy that, uh, sets, um, the, the, the ceiling and the floor for our fund balance. Um, and it's, it's fairly conservative policy. Um, that's very healthy right now. We decided that we were in a position to, uh, essentially be a little more, bit more slightly aggressive with our budgeting, and this is in an effort not to overtax the residents. We want to avoid these end-of-year budgets, surpluses that we've been seeing. And so, um, because of those factors, uh, we set the budget at, again, $24,750,000 for, for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just add to that?
Sure, of course.
Thank you, Councilman Pulis, for, uh, updating. Just to update the council as well, this is a very similar situation as to what happened last year. Um, and the reason that this, the vote was so important at the December 16th meeting is be, it be, it allows our town manager and the Board of Education to start their budgeting process. So, this is a number, as, as was the case last year, that we're going to watch over the next few months, and, um, uh, Councilman Pulis and I have a meeting next, when, next week? Oh, yeah, in two days from now, on, on the 15th. Um, so, we'll, we'll get another update, but we should report back with a, I think last year, the final number didn't come out until right before Chairman Palmieri, uh, presented the budget in, in May. So, this is really a moving target, and we try to do the best that we can, so... That's all I wanted to add to it. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Any questions? Terrific. Uh, we're moving on to Open Space Committee and, uh, Mr. Chaplinsky.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, okay, so, open space, we've had a flurry of activity here in the last, uh, last couple of months. We've started, uh, having subcommittee meetings or committee meetings of the open space and the integration of the farm heritage into the open space. Um, we've, we've set our dates. We had initial meeting of reviewing our plan of conservation and development and why, you know, uh, open space is important to the town, the types of open space we would look for. Um, and we also talked about a vetting process for how we'll go about, um, once we identifying a, a property, uh, you know, the subcommittee will, you know, take a poll as to what the interest in that property is, as well as evaluation process where, you know, town staff goes through evaluation process that they would normally go through and have a, uh, second pair of eyes, if you will, on that vetting process, back with the open space subcommittee to, uh, to validate that the, um, appraised values that are, that are, uh, out there have a second look before they come to council.
I ask you, I'm, I don't mean to interrupt you, but may I ask you a question? When you talk about, uh, it, this is going to be a standardized vetting system. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, uh, all property will be looked at with the same criteria, the same standards, to assess whether or not it's, uh, important for us to have, or whether or not we should pass on the property, or...
Yeah, we're going to follow the plan of conservation and development and the strategy that's been set out, uh, set forth by the open space, uh, committee and the, uh, the strategies in the past for identifying parcels and trying to create a strategy around which ones are important. Once, once we identify them and we have some, uh, some interest from the parties, I've spoken with the town manager about, you know, an appropriate process for that, and, you know, we'll, town staff will handle negotiations. Um, the open space committee will, typically what happens is if there is a, a parcel that's of interest and there is a, an agreement on, in principle, on a value for that property, uh, then town staff will work with the assessors department, and they will go through and look at comparable sales, and they'll do an internal assessment of what that valuation is worth to see, you know, it, it, to ensure that we spend taxpayer dollars in a, in a reasonable way and ensure that we're not, um, offering more money than the value of the property. And if there is, then that's got to be a discussion, you know, as to whether there's a real strategic reason to do that. But on top of that, we want the subcommittee to then look at that valuation, have a second pair of eyes and go, "Yeah, okay, the, the methodology that was used, we think that that's sound." Um, you know, if it needs to be challenged, or we want to have an external view, we can ask for an external view, so that the subcommittee can then feel comfortable that, um, that that looks good. And then the subcommittee will make a recommendation on, uh, whether they feel the par- the parcel is still of interest and whether the, uh, the valuation seems sound. And then they'll recommend that to council for, uh, further negotiations with town staff and things like that. So, that's good. Uh, secondly, um, you know, in, in concert with that, there have been a, a number of properties that we are, are looking at that, so that's, that's really good, and that the, uh, the subcommittees prioritize some of those, and, and town staff is working on those. And then lastly, I mentioned that I was, uh, the, you know, that I had met with Mark Ramsey, who heads, um, and works on the LEAF program here in town, which is part of, um, a lot of the work the Farm Heritage Committee, uh, has done, and with the integration of Farm Heritage with Open Space, um, I've asked Chris Palmieri, uh, Councilman Chris Palmieri, if he would continue to lead in that area, uh, recognizing the great work that he's done over the years in really immersing himself in the LEAF program. I know he's personally, um, vested himself there and be, had a, a strong passion for ensuring the success, um, you know, setting a strategy for that and really helping to execute on that, so we'll be looking for, uh, to him to lead that and make recommendations, uh, within the open space team, uh, along with, um, Board of Ed, uh, Joe Wazowski, Board of Ed member Joe Wazowski, and, um, Mike Riccio from the residence perspective. We'll all kind of strategize together and bring back recommendations, uh, you know, within the committee, because there's a lot of tacit knowledge there that's, that especially Chris has had over the years that's, uh, extremely valuable, and, uh, making sure that we continue that connection and build off the education program that's been started, I think is extremely important, that we don't lose that and that we make it even stronger.
I'm really, I'm really happy that you're taking that turn, Paul, and I, and Chris, I, I really want to thank you also, because I know that you have worked so hard with the LEAF program in the past, securing grants to getting volunteers, so I'm, I'm really happy, and that's exactly what I was hoping, uh, when, when I wanted to meld these two committees together, that there would be a, a flow of ideas and a flow of resource and a flow of, of, uh, movement in that area. So, that's very interesting, and I'm very happy. Yeah. Go ahead, Paul. I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm just...
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Anything else that I missed?
Madam Chair, can I just ask a couple
Of course.
... questions? So, um, so I guess to, uh, the vetting process, would that be something that we will know what, is that, will that be something that you will outline and present that to the council?
Yes, absolutely.
So, we'll know what the vetting process is.
Correct. When there's, when there's items that come, you know, for executive session that, um, are of interest that get then sent along, uh, we will, you know, have them, uh, presented to council as well as the process. And the intention is for me to also provide a regular update of things that come through that process. So, for example, if the subcommittee decided, or the committee decided, um, that there wasn't an interest, so we'll outline those as well, so that the town council can see what was on the docket from Open Space, what did Open Space say, "Yeah, we like this," and what did Open Space say, "No, we didn't," as well as the specifics of the vetting process.
Okay. And, and just a question on the, so the fair market value, so the fair market value would be determined by staff initially?
Mm-hmm.
And then you had said, the subcommittee kind of gives it the second set of eyes. Would, what if the subcommittee doesn't feel that that's the fair market value and it goes to an external, so what would an external, like, who would do that? What would the cost be?
I could, I could answer that if you want.
Absolutely.
The procedure is normally is that, as you know, we, we deal with several different kinds of property, and whether, um, sometimes we have the assessor's office handle it, uh, sometimes we actually do a, um, a pseudo subdivision by our staff to figure out what the value is, and then you take the number of lots, subtract the development costs and all that. Um, if the, uh, if our open space committee or the council, when it gets to the next level, says, "You know what? We think the property is worth less than that," and we do externally, uh, we would get a full-blown appraisal, and that's covered by our costs. We have an open space account that handles administrative costs.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Some of them I think you'll see would be, will be straightforward.
Right.
Some of them, yeah, others you just go, "Hey, maybe we wanna have an external perspective?"
Right, right. Just to get another, I mean, fair market value sometimes can be a moving target.
Absolutely.
Very good. Very good. I love that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very good. Thank you so much. Town managers report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item I have is a, the Board of Finance minutes. The Board of Finance met last year on December 11th. As you will read in the minutes, it was a relatively benign meeting although they did approve unanimously what you approved at your prior meeting, which was the $600,000 for the Blatchley gravity sewer. So that is moving along and as two councilmen already mentioned, that process is already on the way, so we're happy about that. We had some other transfers, as I mentioned to you before, that I'll be starting to transfer and I think I'll do it in two separate transfers for the library. We do have some issues there for maintenance, so we transferred out $25,000 out of contingency. And we're hoping that that carries us, well, hoping it carries us to April. It'd be nice if it carries to June, but I'm anticipating it carries us to April and I'll have to look for a little more money at that point. So those were the things that took place. Happy to answer any questions on the Board of Finance report.
Anyone have any questions for the Board of, for the, on the Board of Finance report?
If there's nothing further on that, at your last meeting, we had an incident on West Queen Street and I have our Director of Health here and while he's up, after he handles this one, so we don't have him sit down and come back up again, he'll also handle the EMPG grant, which is for emergency management. So, Mr. Lockwood.
Good evening. Shane Lockwood, Director of Health, Plainville-Southampton Health District, and also the Town of Southington Emergency Management Director. So, on December 9th, the fire department responded to a fire alarm at Smith Medical at 201 West Queen Street. Upon arrival, they noticed that the fire suppressant system released. They immediately evacuated the building, made sure everybody was out, made sure the building was safe. And then due to concerns regarding fire suppressant systems and foam, they gave me a call, asked me to come out there with them. The foam was mostly contained in a 2,000 gallon holding tank onsite. It was also contained in the building itself and in the parking lot. A minimal amount made it to a catch basin. Understand that this foam is 97 percent, it's diluted. It's 97 percent water and 3 percent foam. So, a minimal amount got out. In abundance of caution, we had the DEP come out there that day. We decided to grab some soil samples downstream from there. We're still waiting the results, but again, with that kind of dilution, very little we think ever left of property. So, what I wanted to really highlight was the response by the town and by the state. This was a great example of what we called Unified Command. While it started off with a fire department issue, it dovetailed into a health issue and we worked together on this. So from the, and this was a regional response too. We had Plainville, Wolkit, Cheshire, and Bristol all respond to either the scene or to the firehouses. During this time of this response, which was probably about four to five hours, we were up there unseen. There was over 10 fire department calls that day. So we had the other towns responding to this. We had the career and volunteers up at Smith Medical. I'll talk a little bit more about that role during there. From the town side, we also had Jeff Poehler, the Assistant Building Official, come out. We were in contact with the water department regarding that. The police department quickly closed down the roads around this area to help along with the assistance of the Public Works Crew to get there. And it was also, it was not a nice day out. It was raining slash snow that day, so we had a lot of people out there in less than ideal conditions. Since that time, I've continued to work with DPH regarding that, DEP regarding this, and the Fire Marshal's Issue Office has continued to investigate the cause of this. We received great assistance from the state. Both DEP was out there that day. Their management called me that night regarding this and we worked on a press release the next day together. Connecticut Department of Public Health was in contact with me again that day, that night, the next day, and we've been in contact since as we await a couple of results, but they've been great regarding this. And really, with, with this incredible response, it's my honor to be up here to talk about it because the fire department led by Chief Butler, Assistant Chief Paul, and Battalion Chief Glenn Doobie was on duty that day, had this thing contained, investigated. We walked the site. We looked at everything. We knew there was no public health concern and it really was a team effort. So, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, but we should be proud of the, the effort that all these departments put into this. Any, any questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Shane, for the update. You just mentioned that there's a couple more tests to do, but, you know, it sounds like you feel confident that there's no public safety risk. But you did mention that there's a couple more tests that are gonna, going to be done. Could you just, if you have knowledge of what those tests are, and then secondly, when the, when the results of those tests do come in, can you update the council?
Certainly.
Maybe just with an email to the town manager and then maybe the town manager could publicly finalize the test results?
Absolutely. So we expect-
At a future date.
There are a couple soil samples that we grabbed downstream from the property. Again, it was a minimal release. This is nothing rare. We've heard about Bradley and the, Bradley Airport, Farmington River. This is nothing close to that scale, but we decided to grab a couple of soil samples and we expect those to be in probably beginning of February sometime. And as soon as I get results, I'll forward it to the town manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do you know what caused it and is it resolved to not happen again?
The, the one thing I did leave out was Smith Medical was incredible during all of this. One of the concerns, any place that has, has this material, they have to keep a material safety data sheet, which is a sheet showing what the chemical is, what the health effects might be, what you can do if you're exposed to the. As the fire department rolled up that day, the, their safety person was outside in the parking lot with the material safety data book handing it to the fire department as they showed up.
Excellent.
So they did a great job. The investigation itself, I'd, I would defer that to the Fire Marshal's Office, but I know it was an accident.
I'm just curious to know if they could, couldn't make sure it doesn't happen again?
They, I know they've gone through that entire system. Again, Fire Marshal would be able to better answer it, but that entire system's been looked at closely.
Thanks, Shane.
Madam Chair, for me. So, first of all, I've, having been in the chemical industry now for almost 25 years, I've been on a, an incident commander on emergency response team within my company and had a number of these, you know, over the years. And I know for the fire department and municipalities, when you have chemicals, you know, when there's a fire, that stuff happens and that's a, it's, it's a fairly known thing. You know, it's something that is worked with every day and I think that there's a certain comfort level with handling an emergency like that. But when you have a chemical, there's a lot of unknowns that come with that as well. And I, I really wanna commend everybody in the process. I did follow this as it was, as it was occurring as well as following the, the town manager's reports that we get and say thank you because I think you guys responded quick. You, you probably prevented the situation from being worse downstream, especially with the weather conditions that were going on. And the collaboration with Smith Medical, as you mentioned, is, is huge because the person who walks out of that building with a known chemical and, and knows exactly what is, that's, what that substance is, really helps the first responders because they, they have to go into a situation treating it as an unknown. And when you have to treat something as an unknown, you take very, very strict precautions. You have bigger perimeters. You have greater things that you have to worry about. And when you know what it is, you can then deal with it in a lot, swifter manner. So, thanks to the, to the company, thanks to the first responders. Really appreciate you guys and the expertise that you brought to, to ensure that, that the damage was minimal. To, to, to your question, Jim, about the, I don't wanna be quoted on the root cause, but I think, what I believe the issue was, was one of the fire alarm pull switches was faulty outside of their emergency containment area where they keep all of their, their chemicals. So, they didn't know it at first, but they worked, from, from my understanding of reading some of the stuff, they worked with the, the party that provides the pull switch service, who is off-site and a different third party. They came and tested it within a couple days to identify the, the root cause and they've mitigated that for the future as well. So that, that's, that's my understanding.
Excellent. Excellent.
So, again, thank you. How about, how about the cost? The only, I'm sorry, Bill. Just, I'm sure there's people who might be watching, maybe to the town manager. In a situation like this, if there's expenses that have to be incurred, how does that get handled from a taxpayer perspective?
Well, we, all the other towns, we have mutual aid. We don't, we don't bill each other. We, we cover each other for that. As for if, over time, it's just like any other fire or any other incident, that's-
Water tests? You know, we, we talk about sampling the river if there's-
That's different from us. If you're talking about the DEEP doing tests, that's up to the state of Connecticut. They do their own testing and they, and whether they bill back is up to them. I do not know the answer to that. But we, as a policy, the Town of Southington, we don't bill people who have car accidents for police and fire protection. That's part of their taxpayer dollars.
Thank you.
That's actually what my question was. Do we know if the property owner is any, under any consent orders with DEEP?
I, I'm not aware of that, but I can certainly look into it and when I report on the results, I'll, I'll share that information.
Well, I wanna just thank you for coming and giving a complete report, Shane. When something like that happens, it ripples through the whole community, fear and, and concern, which rightfully so. But from what I've learned tonight, it was handled efficiently, professionally, and thank you, as Paul said, and that we all, we're just grateful for our firefighters, our emergency personnel, for your department, and for the, for the company's quick action too. So, thank you so much. Anybody have any further questions for Shane on this? Great. Shane, could we go down and could you share with us about the EMPG grant resolution?
Sure. The EMPG grant is an annual grant we get from the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security through the state of Connecticut. In the past, this has helped fund our, our emergency management efforts. It could be providing the food at shelters when we open them up. We open up warming centers throughout the winter, cooling centers throughout the summer, so it helps fund that. And I'm excited to announce that on Friday, we were able to pick up another 100 free cots for the town, which were, help us during shelter. We have to pick up a trailer to be able to store them in. We've been training our CERT team regarding the shelters a little bit more. And so some of this funds, which is about $23,000, will go to some training, go to the trailer. The CERT team, we couldn't do any of this emergency management without our volunteers on the CERT team, so we, we definitely appreciate their efforts here. So, it's not a large amount of money, but we, we're able to spend it directly on emergency management effort.
Yeah, very good. Anybody have any questions about the grant?
Thanks, Shane.
I think we're all set. Shane, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item, Madam Chair, is some of you will remember, it goes back a long, long way, but patience, perseverance. The two gentlemen, the two gentlemen that are coming up now are, been our spearhead for both those areas, Luke Perillo, Art Bogan. This is the tri-party agreement for Beaton and Corbin.
Right.
I've kinda lost track on the number of years. We've been working on this, but I believe it's five, six, somewhere in that area. So, I'm happy to say that this is a major accomplishment. Doesn't mean it's gonna happen tomorrow, but we've made a big step. So, Mr. Perillo, if you could do a brief explanation, and Mr. Bogan, if you can do that, and I say brief.
Loud and clear, sir. Good evening, Madam Chair and council members. I'm here today with Mr. Art Bogan. We're here to request that the town authorize the town manager to sign the tri-party agreement. The tri-party agreement is pertaining to Beaton and Corbin, which is located at 318 North Main Street. Beaton and Corbin was a former plating facility that had environmental contamination on the site. The reason we are here is there's still quite a bit of contamination onsite, over a million dollars worth. The property is commonly known as being upside down, where the value of the property far is below the value of the cleanup. There is an underground storage tank still onsite with former gasoline. There's an above-ground storage tank with fuel oil, there are solvents. And we have a path to have this property cleaned up and bring it back to productive reuse, thanks to Mr. Art Bogan. Mr. Art Bogan is President of the Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank. It's a not-for-profit, nonprofit company, a 501(c). He is one member of the tri-party agreement. The other one is Mark Lovely. He is a developer and a member of 318 North Main Street. And the third is the town. The process basically will consist of the Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank foreclosing on the property and then getting into the remediation. We have $1.1 million covered. The town contributed $150,000. The developer will contribute $150,000 when it's turned over to him and have to pay for anything that exceeds the cleanup costs beyond what we have contained. The developer is getting a loan from the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments in the amount of $400,000. And the town was awarded a State Department of Economic and Community Development Grant of $400,000 for the cleanup. We have an abatement to help cover any costs that go over the $1.1 million on the back end. That abatement will, that is, the responsibility of the developer to pay for is locked in for 10 years and is capped at any of the excess costs. There will not be any tax, we do not currently collect any taxes that are levied on the site now. There will be none during Mr. Bogan's Connecticut Brownfield Land Bank acquisition of the property and cleanup. But for the public to know, since we're not collecting anything now, you have a site that requires over a million dollars of cleanup. We have a wellhead located on Mill Street and this is a gateway to the town adjacent to the fire department. So it's something that we've been trying to get clean. We feel we have the path. Mr. Bogan has created the pathway through the state legislature, through the Brownfield Land Bank initiative by forming that nonprofit. And I'll leave him to explain how the process will continue beyond the signing of the tri-party.
Great. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the land bank, the town, and the developer have completed the discussions around the tri-party agreement. It commits the land bank to do certain activities that will restore the site, same for the developer, same for the town. And we envision, subject to your approval, immediately working to clear the liens on the site, foreclosing on those, and taking title. We almost immediately will transfer that title to the developer and work to manage the cleanup grant funds from the state, coordinating with the same licensed environmental professionals to manage the revolving loan fund that the developer is taking and get the site remediated within about 60 days. And then some of the activities for the redevelopment of the site will close out through remediation. There will be some soils left onsite. They'll be paved over. There'll be monitoring wells. There'll be regular inspections. And what you'll have is the first in the state that will go from abandoned to productive, from unknown conditions to defined conditions to remediated conditions. And a great portion of that is because of the continuing leadership of Mark and Lou to stay steadfast in this and see how you can take something that is a real problem and make it a great return. So we really appreciate the opportunity to have gotten this far and we certainly look forward to being able to break ground and get this really visibly underway as soon as you can. Thank you.
Any questions?
Just briefly, one, just reviewing this agreement, I just, I wanna commend you because I'm sure you are very involved at the state level of getting this type of, this statute passed. The amount of moving parts in this deal is incredible. So I know it's a newer statute, but have you ever seen one of these gone wrong yet?
No, because this hasn't been one yet, so.
That's what I figured.
But, all we've really done is normalize the real estate transaction by taking the Brownfield issues, listing them, defining how they're gonna be paid for, how they're gonna be resolved from a statutory basis, and how we're gonna satisfy the regulations. And the work that will be done on the site will be reviewed by DEEP, DECD, and EPA. So, we feel that in terms of what could have gone wrong, has already gone wrong. In terms of how do we get through these different pieces? And it took us a while, much longer than we anticipated, but we're here now.
Right, and I, representing the taxpayers, I, what I like about the agreement is once we assign you the liens, it appears you guys take all the risk.
Exactly right.
Am I reading that right?
Exactly right.
Okay.
It's a, it's an agreement where the, the town does need to complete its parts, which are to go ahead and review the permit applications by the developer and to work on the tax payment portion that Lou said. But in terms of being in the ground and making sure that that gets managed, we are engaged by the town to do exactly that work under the terms of the grant.
I hope it works out and I hope you can do more of them.
Thank you.
Yes, Paul?
If I may just respond, you also have to understand from a taxpayer perspective, we're very conscientious, especially with the abatements, which is why I'm declaring it and exposing everything right now. What could go wrong is if we do nothing, you have a gasoline tank underground that eventually will leak. You have an above-ground 10,000 gallon tank with fuel oil that eventually is going to leak. So, the town could say, "We don't own it. It's abandoned." But what do you do? We already lost one wellhead once. And how do you replace a wellhead? So we have a path to get there. You know, Mr. Bogan created it through the legislature. He stayed fast through that because it was denied the first time for outside reasons. But the things that could go wrong are probably outweighed by doing nothing. Just because it isn't, we're not, you know, addressing it, doesn't mean it's not a future problem for the town. The other aspect is a building that could be built for 13,400 square feet. We will get tax revenue from that. Somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000, you will get jobs. Doing nothing, you get nothing. We've done relatively nothing for the last 35 years or so and we're not getting any revenue from it. Being a town, we have the benefit of taxation. Eventually, that property will become productive and be put on the tax rolls. So when we spend $150,000 of taxpayer money, we don't do it lightly. We're not doing it for the developer or for a nonprofit. We're doing it for our own community. All right? And, and the reason being is we have a chance to get it back through taxation. So I hope that answers the question of risk.
Very good. Somebody else have something? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I had to acknowledge Paul already.
Sure. So I agree with Bill. I think it's, it really could be a win-win-win-win, I guess, with the tri-party. So just a couple of things that struck me with the agreement. The developer has the sole, in his sole judgment, at the end, right, after the remediation, there's quite a list of contingencies that need to be met. Do we, or do you feel pretty confident that the developer, you know, I mean, we're giving the developer, you know, sole and absolute discretion to walk away from this if these contingencies are not met? Is that the way?
Well, if the contingencies aren't met.
Right, so...
But there is a forward process going through. He has committed funds already and expended funds.
So he's invested in it?
He's invested in it as well. You know, we've given a presentation about four and a half years ago. This has been quite the process. He's hired his own environmental attorney, hired a local attorney as well. He can acquire the property for $150,000. He can get the rent from a building that's put up there and the product, productive use of it.
Right.
You know, you can argue what the value of the property is. Right now, it's negative. And what is it for the town? Again, it's negative. We're not getting anything productive out of it. There's been vandalism, there was a fire at the site, so, you know, it's an eyesore. And, you know, it's abandoned, but quite frankly, we have a path to get it to productive use.
Okay. Because it's quite a, there's quite a bit of work that will need to be done, and...
Quite a bit of work was already conducted, and I would defer to the town attorney should we have any questions further along that line.
Okay. No, the only other question is during, during Brownfield, during your ownership of it, is there a liability on the part of the town or the developer?
The last part?
Is there any liability on the part of the town and the, or the developer? So during your ownership, because you're going to, you're going to take title to the property. And then it sounded relatively quickly that it would be transferred to the developer.
If I may, the, when you're talking about that, they're going to be taking title to it, but they already know where the funding is going to be coming from. So they're going to have, Mr. Lovely's going to sign the $400,000 note. He's putting in one of the 150. The town, I believe our 150 has already been used, I'll tell you the truth, I think most of it's already gone. But in this particular case, they will be taking title to it, but they'll also be taking title to it with the funds necessary to clean the property up. And the statute does give them protection. So it isn't, it isn't like the town just taking it over and not getting any kind of liability protection. They have a little bit more protection in the statute. So, and I can't stress enough the fact that this particular developer has been in this a long way and has, is going to have a lot of skin in the game. Already has skin in the game, and then when you sign a $400,000 note and put in the $150,000. So I'm pretty confident that this developer's got a lot of skin in the game.
Okay, thank you. I, it's, I think it's a good situation.
Most of my comments were covered by the other ones. I'll just say thank you to Lou for your diligence. I know, in my time, it's serving the community, it's been a topic for many years, and Suddington's had a, you know, Suddington had a good run of industrial, this type of industrial activity long before my time, and we've had our share of brownfield and superfund sites, and I think it's incumbent upon us to put our best foot forward to try to remediate some of these, because there is exposure to us. Even though, you know, there may not be anything going on at the site that people can see, of course we had the fire, but there is exposure for water contamination, for other types of contamination. So I think, you mentioned, Madam Chair, earlier in the meeting about Suddington being a green. I think this is, this process is helping us stay at the forefront of what's going on in the state to become more green, and remediation is one aspect of that. And so I think others in the state are going to look to us and look to this type of process and say that Suddington was a leader, and I think we should be proud of that.
I think so too, thank you.
So thank you, Lou.
Someone else? Anybody else right now?
Just to add to that, you know, with the gentleman taking the risk and Mr. Lovely taking the risk, this is a ticking time bomb. I mean, there's, there's gasoline and oils and who knows what else? And so all the risk is on Mr. Lovely and Mr. Bogan to put the right step forward to get this eradicated.
I was very surprised that we still have tanks in the ground. I was like, I feel like I've grown old with this, this property. So I'm very happy. And Lou, again, thank you from our perspective, because you have stuck with this thing and continued with it and continue to work, and we appreciate the collaboration with all three, all three of the entities, so thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can I make one additional comment?
Yeah.
I would also just like to thank the attorneys on the council, also our town attorney, for reviewing this, but there was one paragraph that did stick out at me, for obvious reasons for us on the council, who've been watching land developments in our downtown area, and that's Section 13.5, and it says, "Not speculation. Developers' purchase of the property and its other undertakings under this agreement are and will be for the purpose of development of the property and not for speculation in landholding." So I like that section, but the question I have is, how do we define the purpose of development? Does it mean five years? Does it mean 10 years? Does it mean 20 years? How long can the developer sit and say, "Yes, I'm still developing this property"? And I think you understand where my question is coming from.
I understand, and it's very well thought out, and it's a great question. The developer has the clock ticking with the Nuggetuck Valley Council of Government loan. The EPA loan has a deadline, all this process has a deadline. The other aspect is, once he starts investing the money, he's got to get a return on the money, and the only way to get the return on the money is to develop the property. Holding it, he'll be investing more monies than what the net value of the underlying land is. How he gets his money through the abatement is through the productive reuse of the property for an upbuilding.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, if that's Mr. Manager, are you just, are you done?
I have one more, ma'am.
Okay.
As per recommendation of the Apple Harvest Committee, you have two documents in front of you.
Oh, yes.
The first one is, actually, they're both very familiar to you, they're similar to what you did last year. The first one is the Apple Harvest Coordinator and Assistant. I'm happy to say that both David and Julia have agreed to resume their posts for the same cost. If you remember correctly, it's $15,000 toward, to David, and $5,000 to Julia. That was approved unanimously by the, by the Apple Harvest Committee for your recommendation. The second item I have is that the Apple Harvest is recommending that Melissa Kukouza once again be the sponsorship coordinator. There were a few minor changes. The compensation is the same, but they took out, the recommendation is to take out several sponsors, which are called in-kind sponsors, where the sponsor does things for the festival without giving monetary consideration, and those have all been agreed on by Mrs. Kukouza. So if there's any questions on those, I would need two separate votes when it comes to that.
Does anybody have any questions on those?
No questions, just a comment, if I could.
Yes, please.
Dave is here, and I just want to, again, thank Dave and Julia. It was their first year, and they did a great job in this role, so I'm very excited to have the potential to offer them that again, depending on the vote tonight. So I want to thank them. And also Melissa, Melissa's been our sponsorship coordinator for several years, and sponsorships came through a little later this year than we would have liked, but we did get quite a bit of sponsorships, so I'm glad we're able to offer contracts to all three of them again for next year.
Very good. Anybody else have any comments?
With that, Madam Chair, I will need an executive session tonight, and we'll be talking about several properties for real estate. There'll be no action outside of executive session.
Thank you. Very good. Town attorneys report. Attorney Taylor?
Thank you. Also, one, our Chair, Victoria Triano, but I don't think I have anything to report today, but looking forward, that will probably be the last time I'll be able to say that, because it looks like we have a lot of things going on. So I know, preparing for next meeting, there will be an extensive report.
He's also going to be the star of executive session, so he'll be...
All right, well, that's okay then. Thank you so much. Public communication, you have five minutes to share your issue with the town council, but five minutes, because we have much still left to do tonight. Thank you. Would anybody like to address the council? Good evening, Ilio.
I know I've got time, but gotta catch a train, I guess. It's the Bible, and it's a American flag. When somebody be pushed almost for 50 years, lie after lie, well-educated people, hey, make a prudent, do not understand, acquitire. Rest in peace, Councilman Raymond Bradeski, he understood. State Representative Angelo Fosco, he understood so well. He was this way, because you used the lawyer to blind him, you know? It turned him up the brains. And then the police do hang off. I really, I was in America two places, in America and Italy. I learned something, but I never dreamed here. I know you knew country, you think. This was done by the best manager, Yisrael. I said, I will give you this to you, Chairwoman. I would suggest purely, in sense of the good spirit, that you have a family member present at the nationalization for you to understand you, why you suggest the family they have represent you. When he, he and then me at that time, they know what they done by force me. And, and the lawyers, there were two lawyers, like last week, at times, because you are more, you know, I'm just so many people, but I know how they work, I mean, I'm, I'm old, but I don't.
Thank you.
I have two. Ilio, I have two.
Can I see the other paper?
He only has one, Ilio has one.
I'll give it back to you.
We'll make sure it gets in the record. That's okay, we'll make sure it's in the record, Ilio.
Pause the timer.
Thirty-five thousand. Yep, absolutely. Yep, we'll make sure it gets in the record.
Of course.
I will.
Thank you, we'll share.
Oh, okay. We got, we...
You got the book, and I give everything.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
I got my own. The fiduciary deed.
Listen, I read it to me, I told my family.
Seventy-one.
Yes.
You know, thought.
I wanna get here, this is over the report. Open the road. It's very shame. I thought I came in America, instead I, I am in Palestine. That's what it is. Please, be together, I know you got a room for yourself and make a decision, like Bradeski, rest in peace, and said that's what make a decision. How they can step somebody? And I'd be step for a long time. I tried to be nice to so many people, talked outside of the council, why this, and then want to do it, then want to do it, but you are the councilman. No one got up beside you, cherie woman, that you say you're locant, where you do it. I appreciate that. At last, one after one, nobody said. I have a meeting last year for the town manager. I showed the book how much I lost. He make, not just him, whatever he makes, I lost about a thing every year. I was to do build the road, me and Rafa Forjona, rest in peace, pardon my error, and the police rounded me up, they said they wanted it. How can I explain that I am a dummy? According to the manager, Yisrael, I don't understand, because he's a thief, and I will tell you another thing.
Oh, no, Ilio, you're, we're done.
It's time, it's all.
I know it is.
How you can make it? I know how you make it.
But you, but you know what, Ilio, what I am going to do is, I'm going to make sure that all of this gets into the record for you, and we'll make sure that it gets in there.
There's a blank in here. And then on top of there...
Penciled in.
Thank you, Ilio. Thank you, Ilio.
We become violent. How bad the Italian, in Italy, not because of any good over there, but such a thing the judges said, I never heard. Neither the judge here in America, he said...
Okay, thanks so much, Ilio.
You're welcome.
Mr. Manus, would you pass that down?
Thank you, Mr. Fraschilla.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak today in the public communication? Anyone else? No, okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Ilio.
You're welcome.
So now let's, I've got some stuff here, I don't know. Let's go right into old business. Action on the Board of Finance minutes.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
There's a motion, second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Action on the tri-party agreement of Beaton and Corbin.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we accept the agreement as presented in our packet.
Authorize the manager to sign the agreement.
Authorizing the manager to sign the agreement, somebody seconded. Paul? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you so much, it passed unanimously. Action on the Apple Harvest Festival coordinators.
I'll make them...
And I think we need, we need two separate motions, so go ahead, Chris.
I'll make a motion to award the Apple Harvest Coordinator positions to Dave LaPray with his assistant of Julia Bardinelli.
Okay, Paul's going to second that, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or, okay, in all agreement, unanimously carried, and the second, the second...
I'll make a motion to award the Apple Harvest Festival sponsorship consultant position to Melissa Kukouza from A Balanced Life.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I'll second again.
You're going to second that also, Paul? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That also carries. Action on the EMPG grant resolution.
So moved.
So moved, Chris Pulis is moved.
I'll second.
And Mike is seconded.
That's fine.
A roll call vote, we need a voice vote on this.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmeiroi?
Yes.
Pulis?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Santo?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Carries unanimously, thank you, everybody. Tax refunds?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we approve the tax refunds as outlined in our packet.
Do I have a sec? Okay, I have a second with Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Item number two, person with disabilities commissioner?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forth the name of Melissa Olson. She is an occupational therapist with a private practice.
Here in Suddington?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Melissa Olson, we appreciate your service. All right now, I'm going to entertain a motion for adjournment into executive session, barring the press and public.
I'll make that motion.
But inviting the...
Representatives from the library board for the first one, and then they'll leave and we'll stay for the other ones.
For the town attorney.
Yes. I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out today, and we'll see the library folks in the side room. Thank you all.